Welcome, everyone, to the Eugene City Council work session for April 24th. Welcome to a full house today and for those watching at home. We have a bunch of things I'm going to try to manage here today, and good luck to me. So number one is we -- you received in your email some information from Glenn about the Mupti extension or whatever you choose to do, and I'm going to ask Glenn to go through that really quickly, and then we are going to try to figure it out as quickly as we can. And then we have two items, the most important item on our list today is at least to get a robust discussion going on the homeless camping issue, but we also have the Metro Plan Boundary, and what I talked to the city manager about is they'll just do a quick presentation and then we'll come back and discuss it in another work session. So we won't use any of our time for debate on or discussion on that today because we want to preserve as much of the time as we can for the major issue at hand, okay?
If it makes it easier, we'll just come back with the whole Metro Plan in a different work session.
Okay, all right, if you're okay with that, all right.
Nice work.
Okay. Okay, Glenn, you want to talk about the Mupti extension thing?
So the Mupti suspension that the council adopted lapses at the end of June. In order for you to adopt a revised Mupti program and have it take effect before that suspension lapses, you would need to act by the end of May because an ordinance would not take effect for 30 days. It's not possible to get you a proposed ordinance onto your public hearing calendar for the middle of May because we have to give notice to the public, we haven't -- we can't draft the ordinance until you have another work session. So the two options that I sent to you in that email, one option is you direct us to bring back to you for a public hearing in the middle of May, an ordinance that would actually extend the suspension for, and you can choose whatever time you want, but we are thinking 30 days, that would allow the suspension to continue to the end of July. So if you acted on Mupti in June, then your Mupti ordinance would take effect, your new one would take effect before the suspension lapsed. The other option is we don't bring something back to you. If you take action on a final Mupti ordinance in June, it means there will be a window within which people could apply under the old program, but they would have applied knowing that you have already changed the Mupti criteria, and so they would be taking the risk that the council would decide, if not in the public interest, to approve a Mupti under the old program, given that you've already adopted new criteria. The question I have for you today is, do you want us to bring you back an ordinance for a public hearing middle of May to extend the Mupti suspension?
Okay, George Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think that's exactly what we should do. It's fairly complex. I mean, we had -- I thought we had a really great discussion Monday at the work session about the potential changes. It's going to be kind of complicated, and I -- the staff's going to present a matrix because there'll be different headings, minimum threshold requirements, revision of our scoring card, revision of financial monitoring of the program of each individual project during the 10-year extension period. So, and I mean, it's possible staff could bring back everything, but I don't think that we're -- I'm not worried about staff bringing back a decent product. I'm worried about the extended discussion that we're going to have at council going through what staff brings us back and agreeing on, you know, specific new requirements for the program. I think that's going to take much more than one or two, it's going to take at least two work sessions, just guessing. So I would propose that we do option number one, extend the suspension period, and I would say extend it till October 1st. That will leave plenty of time for a very good thorough discussion. I'd rather spend a little, have us spend a little extra time on it and come up with a really decent product that will provide community benefits, that will provide affordability, will provide certainty for the developers. It won't be punitive. We want people to take advantage of the program, so we don't want to make it too restrictive that no one will work with it. And I just think it's going to take us a long time at council to really agree on a new set of principles for the program. So the reason I think it's okay to go to October 1st, we're on break pretty much the whole month of August and actually into September. If we go to October 1st, well, for instance, the Core Campus submitted their application January 24th. That's usually when they do it. Capstone submitted theirs in last January. It gives the developers plenty of time.
So George, did you put a motion out?
Well, I will. I'm -- okay, I'll put a motion out. I move to direct staff to schedule a public hearing and an ordinance in mid-May to extend the suspension till October 1st.
Second. Moved in second. All right, Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope we won't do this. I wasn't in favor of suspending this during the alteration process before, but I'm -- I think all the reasons I gave at the time are much more pronounced with the idea of extending the suspension. I believe all we're doing is hanging out a sign that says we're closed for business right now. I just had, just left a half an hour ago from meeting with a group of local plumbing and other types of local contractors who are kind of cranky about a couple of things, and they're very helpful about some ideas around our Mupti discussion. But one of the reasons for that is because frankly, there's not a lot of work for them right now, and for us to do anything that discourages any new projects or them having the capacity to work into the summer and the late spring, I think is a bad idea. I don't think it's, I don't think it's reaching at all to say that most people at the table here are in favor of altering Mupti. I think everybody pretty much knows that after our Monday night meeting. I think everybody sees that we're going to make some adjustments, but probably keep the program. I don't believe there's any harm in allowing people to apply, knowing the length of time it takes to get that application on the council's agenda, and that we will likely be done by the time it appears before us, and knowing as we've heard so many times that there's no guarantee that someone would accept, that would receive a favorable response on a Mupti. It's fairly subjective, and we have the option. So we can simply, you know, if they're not coming close to meeting the new requirements we're already discussing and should already have in place, they wouldn't pass, and that's our decision. So I hope we don't discourage people from applying and beginning the process of new projects just because this is taking us a little longer.
Alan?
I kind of like the happy medium, which is actually to get this done before we go on break. So I guess the question for staff is, what would that calendar look like if we wanted to get this done before we went on break? And break is the, I forget the date, I was trying to look it up.
First week of August, I think.
The end of July, right?
The 30th.
Yeah, okay, 30th of July.
I think a lot from our perspective is, is how fast the council wants to move. We will, we're continuing to work to, we'll bring things back to you, and I think it will depend upon how soon you're comfortable making the decisions and what amount of information you need in order to make those decisions. And so our expectation, or at least from ourselves, is to be able to have all that information that you can make a decision prior to June 30th if you choose that. The ordinance would act, would not actually take effect in that case for that 30 days, and that's that window Glenn was talking about. But that's what we'd still be working towards unless you had different guidance on a timeline for that.
All right, so I guess are there, I don't have the schedule in front of me, so are there adequate places for work sessions between now and the end of July for us to be able to fit in enough work sessions to deal with this adequately? Probably need.
From us, to, from our perspective, between now and the end of July, we could definitely put in two. Our intent would be is if you keep the date at June 30th, we'd also try to build in as many work sessions as you need, given just depending on how many you need. So if you need another one or two, I think we can accommodate that. If you need another three or four, that might be a different conversation for the June 30th date as opposed to the July 31st date.
So I'm in favor of getting this, well, trying to get this done before we can, before the break, and if not, we can extend it, but I think deadlines are a good thing to keep this on track.
Chris?
Almost did. Thank you. After the conversation Monday night, I am also persuaded there's a lot of moving parts that need to be worked through, and as you know, I'm very much invested in doing this right. So that for me, then, it becomes an issue of can we do it right in that amount of time? And I'm looking at the calendar, we have seven work sessions between now and July 1. And if we clear the decks, we can obviously get it done, but I don't know if it's practical for us to consider clearing the decks between.
If you have other things on deck.
There's a few other things on deck, and they're high priority stuff. So of those seven, you say you could maybe carve out a couple?
That's what we'd be looking towards. Remember, we also talked about if it's, if it's an item that you want an extra meeting, if that were important enough, we can also do that, so we can take a look at that as well.
Yeah, because there's also, in May and June, it looks like there's three regular meetings too, which have work sessions in front of them, where we could also fit something in. Like Alan, I would like to get it done as quickly as possible, and I've talked to George, and I think his intention is not to try to use this as some way to damage or hurt Mupti. I think he really wants to try to do a deliberate job. Whether we need to go all the way to October 1st, I don't know. I would like to see if there's a way to get it done sooner, but I want to take the time necessary. So for me, I need the reassurance that we can carve out enough meetings to still stay on the timeline we've got. That for me is going to be the big issue. If it looks like between the seven work sessions and the three council meetings with work sessions in front of them, we can carve out, and I'll pull a number out, if we could pull out maybe four, that may be what it takes, I don't know. If we can, if we can come up with four, then we can stick with the timeline, but that sounds awfully ambitious to me.
I think it'll be difficult to get four work sessions between now and then. Our expect, our anticipation was that you would need at least another work session and a public hearing before being able to land finally on that. If you're thinking it's going to take four more work sessions, that will be difficult to carve out between now and the end of June. But given what we originally anticipated, we'd still be working towards the end of June, I think we could carve out two work sessions to get there.
Okay, so two work sessions and a public hearing? Could you, could we do that within the, within the schedule?
Because a public hearing would be in June.
Right.
June, public hearing.
July.
Yeah, see if you want to pass it by the end of June. We have to figure out within that calendar. So I'm reserving the, my, my thinking on whether we need to extend based on whether or not we can get this done, and if you think we could get two more work sessions plus a public hearing before July 1, then I'm comfortable with sticking with the calendar. But that's, you know, you have to tell me whether we can make that work or not.
We can make that work, and then it'll just be a matter of if that's enough time for you to make your decisions.
You can't promise, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm hearing what the city manager is saying, you guys, and what he's saying is he can tell you what he can put big space for, but he can't tell you how long it's going to take you to deliver.
Oh, I agree. I, you know, you can't read, you can't read all of our collective minds. And so you can understand why that's why I'm in a quandary. I want to get it done quickly, but I want to do it done, do it done right. And so, you know, it's back to you having a right, cheap, or fast, pick any two, and right is always the one for me.
Me too.
Yeah.
All right, I've got George Brown and then Claire.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I'm glad that Councilor Pryor brought this up. I hope everybody understands that this, the whole purpose of these work sessions is not to kill Mupti, it's to give it a serious makeover, which most of us believe that it's in desperate need of. We want to make the program better, we want to extend it to areas that really need, could use some quality development, and offer, offer an incentive to the developers. The whole idea is revision, so going a little slower, getting it right, I hate to put an artificial constraint on their time. Now, if we get, and maybe we'll be able to do this, I mean, I hope we can finish it before October 1st, that'd be great, I'm all for that. But we, we need to, we need to give ourselves time to do it right. I don't want to see us come up with a product that is less than what it could be, and I think we're doing that by, you know, not extending it for a few more months. It will still give the developers plenty of time to absorb the new criteria and make an application in the winter. They're not going to miss out on this, the start of the construction season in late spring and early summer. They'll still have plenty of time to meet those construction schedules. This, this will actually provide clarity, because what's the point of somebody making us, submitting an application under the old criteria before we finalize the new criteria? It makes no sense. It will actually provide a lot more clarity for the developers, and they'll, that's what they want to see. And if it takes us a little bit more time, that's fine, there's nothing wrong with that. We have other things coming up. We have safe demolition protocols, that's going to take two or three meetings probably to decide on something like that. We still have to, we're going to go over integrated pesticide management again. Staff's been working on some great new things there, we'll have to be discussing that. There's work sessions coming up on the Riverfront Urban Renewal District. There's all these other things. So to try to cram the Mupti discussions into one month to the detriment of all these other important discussions is, I think, making a bad mistake, and we can space it out a little bit more. And it's not going to discourage development. Actually, people will be happy to see what the new criteria are, but it's going to take time to go back and forth and get, get to a place where the majority of us can agree. And I just don't think we can do it in the timeframe that we've set for ourselves. And also, I think I just need one more round to, kind of on the same subject, but I need to ask the manager a couple of questions.
I just want to remind you, you have another subject coming on that's a little important today. All right, Claire.
Thank you, yeah. It's unfortunate, it feels like we're having a debate all over again, that we already had a debate on. You know, I'm all right with extending the timeline, I prefer not all the way to October. I think that's way more time than we need to get this decision done. Maybe I'm misreading where my fellow counselors are, but I, I heard a lot of consensus around some of the general principles that we want, and now we just need to get back some information from the city staff to help inform exactly what we want to see in terms of those details. So I'm feeling at least maybe two work sessions at most that we could come to a wise and careful decision. I believe Councilor Clark is encouraging me to make a friendly amendment. So I don't know if Councilor Brown would accept a friendly amendment to extend the deadline to the end of July.
It's not enough time, no.
Well, I would be inclined, if this is the only motion we can put out there to extend some time, I'll support it, but I prefer not as long an extension, I don't think we need it.
Have as many motions as you want.
Can I make a substitute motion? Gotcha, all right. Well, then I'll make a substitute motion to extend our deadline for this conversation to the end of July.
Second.
Second. All right, and then Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to hear that amendment. I don't want to do this at all, I think it's a terrible idea for the reasons I mentioned, but certainly I'm, I would support the idea of doing this if we can get it done, and because of the flexibility, that's fine. I'll, I'll go with that, but I really hate to say to people we are in fact, you know, discouraging them from doing developments if this is necessary to their development. We would be discouraging them from beginning or just, or planning them until next year, and that just doesn't seem wise to me.
Alan?
I'll support the substitute amendment, motion. I think if we can get it done, we should try to get it done. If we can't, then we'll reassess where we are. But I think there's a lot, I agree that, I think there's a lot of agreement, so I think it'll go probably faster than we think. Answay to this, or complimenting to this, there was a conversation a while back that we were having around onsite supervision for multifamily housing, and we had a work session on that, and it never came back to us, and it's related to this as well, so I would hope that that, that item comes back to council soon too.
All right, Dettie?
I really won't say much, people usually say that and then they do, but we need to get to the main topic today. But I, as one who wants to kill Mupti altogether, but realize that won't happen, I still think we need more time, and I will vote against this substitute motion, hoping that we'll pass the original motion. And the thing that is urgent is that we get to our discussion about the topic today, and I hope also we need to save time for a work session, which I've requested on a homeless shelter, using CDG funds for that. And the thing that really is urgent is that we act on the core application, because according to the Register Guard, that will be approved automatically if we don't do anything, and I think we need to vote on that soon. Thank you.
George, did you want to speak again?
No.
Okay, we're going to vote on this.
I want to ask the manager a question after the vote, though.
All right. All those in support of the substitute motion, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, in opposition, two, it passes. So now the main motion is substituted, all right. All those in favor, please indicate. Two, two, four, five, in opposition, two, it passes. All right, thank you. And George, you had something you wanted to?
Yes, I have a quick question for the manager. When I was going through the material for Monday night's work session about Mupti, I came across, this was in the packet on page 50, it's administrative rule, administrative orders, and it's recommendation on applications. It says, "Within 90 days from the date of an application is filed, the city manager shall review the application and material, publish a one column, three inch minimum display out in the guard soliciting recommendations or comments from the public, 30-day comment period." And three, recommend to council that the application be denied, approved, or approved subject to conditions. I have a copy of Core Campus' hub application, and it was dated January 24th, and by my addition, today's the 90th day, so I'm wondering when we will see your recommendation and when is the ad going to be published in the guard, and it seems like it's time, and when we're going to have our first meeting on Core Campus proposal.
I don't know, I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay, well, yeah, I just brought this up because it's, it's pretty unambiguous. Says, "Within 90 days from the date an application is filed, the city manager shall do these three things," and today's the 90th day, so hopefully we'll hear something next week. And with the schedule of when our first discussion on Core Campus.
Okay, we're going to move to our next item, but before we do, can I suggest that you guys take this material that you're given for the Metro Plan Boundary and put it to the middle of the table, or send it to me or something, and we'll gather it so they don't have to repeat and make more of the same when they come back again? Okay, thank you. All right, so now we're going to be talking about homeless camping and parks and open spaces. City Manager.
Thanks, Mayor, and I'll, I'll just turn it over to Mark in the interest of time.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Piercy, and members of the council. So just a quick note, as you're putting that material in the middle, there was two PowerPoints. The black and white one was the one I'm going to present.
All right.
So make sure you, right, make sure you hang on to that one. Again, I'm Mark Shoney, I'm the acting director of the Parks and Open Space Division.
I'll find it.
And I also wanted to introduce Jen Bills from the Eugene Police Department's here in the audience, as is Michael Wiss of Community Development Division.
Thank you.
So to start with, the city has over, or has 78 neighborhood and community parks and over 3,000 acres of open space. And the parks were not developed to accommodate camping and lack the, the level of service typically associated with the campground in terms of water and wastewater, garbage service, and security. And our open spaces, many of those are in, have overlay zones that are, they're in proximity to, along the Willamette River, the West Eugene Wetlands, and Amazon Creek, and they have overlays that were meant to protect water quality and sensitive habitat, and those are found in our zoning code. And this slide is our Parks and Open Space map, so the, the green areas are parks, so here's, this large one is probably the easiest to see, is Alton Baker. And then the red areas are homeless camps that we've documented over the past year or so. So the, the areas that are small, are single dots, are just one camp. This is the Bertelson Nature Park, which is almost all red, so this is in the West Eugene Wetlands and has quite a few camps. So the camps, you know, they, there's homeless camps out in, out in the west, there are a lot down in Alton Baker Park, there's homeless camps up around Golden Gardens Park, there's homeless camps we found in the headwaters of Amazon Creek. And so that, some of the, the hotspots are, as I mentioned, the Bertelson Nature Park, along Alton Baker Park, I think this here is Washington Jefferson Park and Amazon Park. And there's also quite a few neighborhood parks in Bond, Ascot, Oakmont, Schober, Monroe. So that, so the issue's spread across the city's Parks and Open Space system, with some areas having a much higher density of homeless camps.
At some point, not now, but later on, can we get a more definitive graphic, because I can't make anything out up here, nor can I make anything out on the black and white slide here?
Certainly.
Is that done?
I apologize, can I just jump into and ask, are we going to look at anything regional or just the city of Eugene?
Just the city of Eugene. The city of Eugene, Parks and Open Space. So the types of, just to, in the, in the counselors that were able to go on the tour saw both the types of, different types of homeless camps and the, and then some of the impacts. So this, this particular slide is of a, just a sleeping bag on a, on cardboard underneath the bridge, under the Beltline Bridge up in, in the Bethel area. This is a single tent in a fairly neat and tidy campsite in Alton Baker Park. This is a tarp structure up by Golden Gardens Park, and these are very common in the West Eugene Wetlands. And then this is a wood structure up in the headwaters of the Amazon that was, this was about, I think about a year ago, and it took, took the better part of a day for the sheriff's work crew and city staff because of the difficult access to clean this particular site. And then this is underneath the Ferry Street Bridge on the Willamette River. In this picture, what, what's happened is, this is the rock revetment that was placed when the bridge was constructed to protect the bridge abutment from scour during flood events, and it's been, it's been moved and all these rock coves have been created. So, so we had to clean up all the garbage, we brought in this piece of equipment called a grade-all, and reestablished the rock revetment, and then shot created it, and so that, the cost of that mitigation was about $3,000, and that was, that's been in the, in the past month. And some, some of the issues of homeless camps to our Parks and Open Space resources are large amounts of garbage, human waste, hazardous waste, which can include hypodermic needles and just unknown liquids, and if they're large quantities, we, we bring in a private contractor to mitigate those sites, and that comes out of the Parks and Open Space budget. In those areas that are riparian corridors or wetlands, there's impacts to water quality, and there's destruction of sensitive habitat in those same areas. And again, for the counselors that were able to take the tour, this is in the Bertelson Nature Park in West Eugene Wetland, just garbage left after a camp was Nature Park in West Eugene Wetland, just garbage left after a camp was abandoned. This is a site in Alton Baker Park near the BMX Park. And this is out in the West Eugene Wetlands. Again, just large quantities of garbage left after folks have moved to a different site. And so the financial impacts, we don't, we have a contract with the sheriff's work crew for, typically it's about $180,000 a year, and almost all of that resource is dedicated to cleanup of homeless camps. Parks and, and so that's more quantitative. Parks and Open Space resources, equipment, materials, and staff, we don't track this activity separately, but it's in the range of $300,000 annually for materials and supplies and staff to mitigate homeless camps. And to put it in perspective, this is a slide from a budget committee presentation two years ago that shows how much infrastructure we've brought into the park system as of that time because of two successful capital bond measures, and the value that the community placed on the park system. And also from that same presentation, this was the key messages, the magnitude of the infrastructure that we've brought on, the fact that, you know, this was two years ago, that we haven't kept up, the funding is still at the 1998 levels for the operation and maintenance of the park system, even with that increase in infrastructure. And the discussion at that time was how to, how to close that gap of operation and maintenance costs to accommodate that new infrastructure. Some of the non-financial impacts are the decline in use of our parks by the community and the decline in volunteer efforts. And a good example is the Bertelson Nature Park in West Eugene, where it was once a very popular site for bird watchers, and that's diminished to, it's not, it's not used much at all. And we've also had volunteer groups not willing to, or telling us they're not willing to work in the West Eugene Wetlands because of the number of homeless camps there. And so our management objectives in the Parks and Open Space Division in dealing with homeless camps is primarily the safety of Parks and Open Space users, and also the safety of our Parks and Open Space staff that are working in the Parks and Open Space on a daily basis. And also, the goal is to preclude the establishment of semi-permanent camps. And by semi-permanent, I mean tents, the wood structures, the tarp structures, and with the realization that our staff are working from typically 7:00 to 3:30, and our sheriff's crew works for us between 8:30 and 2:30. So we're there during the day, and we're not going to be able to address the folks that are sleeping in the parks overnight. We're able to address folks that are establishing semi-permanent camps, and that's where our efforts have been focused. And so the, just to kind of go through the management tools of how we do this, the Eugene Code that prohibits camping in our Parks and Open Spaces, and our own park and open space rules that establish the hours that parks are open, give us the regulatory framework to manage homeless camps. Our own procedure that we've developed, this was, more recently, we've updated because of the, we've updated it to be consistent with the Ninth Circuit Court decision and with the Oregon Revised Statute, so that guides our Parks and Operation folks in how they mitigate homeless camps. And our partner with the, partnership with the Lake County Sheriff's Work Crew, which does a lot of the cleanup for us, and our partnership with the Eugene Police Department that helps us when we're doing a cleanup and there's, and we feel our staff are at risk from either hostile individuals or aggressive dogs that are sometimes found in homeless camps. So the steps that we go through is, and it's really to be consistent with those two, that Ninth Circuit Court decision and the Revised Statute, is we'll post a notice at a campsite 24 hours in advance before we schedule a cleanup, and that will be posted in both Spanish and English. We'll work with the sheriff's crew to mitigate the site, and then that posting will also let folks know what, there's information on which, what social services are available to the homeless. And one of the things we picked up from the council tour was, Council Prior mentioned, that we should also notify folks of the 2-1-1 service through United Way, so that's something that we're going to incorporate into that, into that posting. And then the sheriff's crew will come in, or city staff, and we'll clean up the site, and we'll dispose of the garbage, and we'll store the personal property, and leave notice where that property can be collected. It's out at Garfield Site. And then hold that for 30 days for folks to come and claim personal property, and at that time, it'll be either disposed of, recycled, or donated. And then we're going to be, we're updating our maintenance management system so we'll be able to track better the cost of mitigating homeless camps to our, to the Parks and Open Space budget. And I'll note that that, we haven't, we haven't mitigated camps for the most part for the la, since late, late last year, because we've been going through the process of updating that procedure, and also we've got to finish our storage area out at, out at the Garfield Site. So we're still, what I've outlined is the process we're about to implement but haven't been able to, because we haven't completely got our site set up out at the Garfield property. And so I guess, in summary, I wanted, two points I wanted to make is, one is that if it wasn't clear from my presentation that the Parks and Open Space are both the infrastructure that we have and our folks in the field were, are heavily impacted by homeless camps, and it takes a good deal of resource to manage those, and we don't believe it's a compatible use with our Parks and Open Space system. And then the other point is, is Parks and Open Space staff as a whole are empathetic to the homeless in our community and the homeless issue, and deal with the homeless on a day-to-day basis, and in many cases are on a first-name basis with a lot of the homeless folks that are, that are in our Parks and Open Space. So that concludes my part of the present, or the presentation about the Parks and Open Space piece. And yesterday, and I think you all have it, is Glenn Klein, our city attorney, sent a set of alternatives, four alternatives to you electronically by email, and I just wanted to quickly go through those. And so the first was, in following the section of the code about prohibited camping, there's a section on permitted camping. And so the first one is, is an opportunity to increase the number of camps, campers allowed on religious institutions or private property from the current number of three to six. And that would require an ordinance admitting that section of the code. The second one would be another ordinance revision that would allow religious institutions to have, allow dusk-to-dawn camping on their property in a suggested number of perhaps five, that wouldn't be considered camping in that it would need restroom facilities or garbage, it would just be parking a car overnight in that type of facility. And then the third is the extending, the, removing the sunset on the Conestoga Hut ordinance, or extending the sunset. And then the fourth was around Opportunity Village and the cost of their conditional use permit.
Can I just make one, a couple additions to what Mark just talked about? And number two was, not just religious institutions, but any nonprofit agency from a dusk-to-dawn, and it's not just cars, but it could be tents, or huts, or however that particular entity chooses to do that. So I just wanted to make a couple of those clarifications as well.
You ready to open up for discussion?
Yes.
I've got Alan in the queue, got Greg in the queue, got Sinclair, Mike, George. Okay. My comment, I guess I want to start this out with, is to say, it appears to me we have a pretty high cost of not dealing with this. So we have a high cost, both in terms of human beings in our community having a place, a legal place to be, and we, and that's healthy, and doesn't have a negative impact, and we have a really bad cost in terms of our Parks and Open Space and their usability for the entire community. So both of those are impacts of us not dealing with this. We're stressed right now, as everybody knows, for funds for park maintenance and for dollars for human, to meet human resource needs. So we have a need to do something different, a need to take some action, and very, and maybe even increasingly diminishing resources to deal with it. So I think fundamentally, a lot of people have come to us and said, "Well, if this is not where people are supposed to be, where can they be?" And then the other question is, how do we better protect the spaces that we have that are there to be utilized by everybody, and to protect other species and other, our natural environment? And I would really not like, and I don't think it's a, it's a good discussion, to pose those things against each other. I think we want both of those things. And so I would hate for people to take away from this conversation anything that is pointing blame, or anything that is pointing fingers at anybody. I think this is, we have people whose needs need to be dealt with, and we have important things that the community has invested in to take care of, and we need to find a way to do both of those. I'm hoping we're going to have a very robust conversation, and we'll challenge ourselves till we come up with something that at least gets our foot in the road to do something better. Alan?
I certainly have compassion for the unhoused, and I've been working on housing for homeless folks and at Rescue Youth in particular for decades now. There's no easy solution to this. The ultimate solution, I think, is something that we started, which is the Opportunity Eugene Micro Housing Pilot Project on Garfield, is a great opportunity to see how this would work and alleviate all those people's fears and concerns, once this, which I believe will be a successful pilot. But in the, but in the meantime, the issue is, people are already camping all over the place, and they're camping in areas that are sensitive environmental areas and other places. And recently saw a survey, we had over 1,700 homeless people in our community in a count that we just recently did. So I, I think that what we should do is take incremental steps towards solving this problem. The Garfield Site is, Opportunity Village is a good thing to do. I think we should probably also try a 90-day pilot program that allows people to sleep undisturbed and camp overnight from about 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM on, and I'll throw this out for a discussion, on vacant lands, vacant city-owned lands, but not including improved parkland or sensitive environmental open spaces, and also religious institutions or nonprofit organizations, if they permit it, and have it go for 90 days, and then bring it back to the council and see how that worked, and what we can do beyond that. So when the time comes, I'm interested in drawing that out as a potential motion to, for a pilot program to see how a camping van lift would, lifting of the camping van would work.
And Greg?
Well, the council's likely stole some of my thunder, but I concur with that observation and your last point, Alan, and I think that we knew, we do need to look at, you know, relocating some of the homeless who are currently, you know, in camping in developed parks into non-developed spaces. We have a number of those patches of land around the city, from what I understand, and I think that a 90-day modification of the camping van from, say, 10 o'clock at night to 7:00 in the morning would be appropriate. But I would, I would also say that, in a transitional sense, that I think that it's, it may be unworkable to try to move those people immediately out of where they are, but to transition them out of our parks in a way that is sensitive and humane and makes sense. And so I would like to suggest that geographically, if we could spread, say, five designated areas where people are already camping now, have a trial, 90-day lifting of the dusk-to-dawn camping van in those designated areas, whatever they may be, and begin the process of having them be relocated to private religious institutions who will take them. Is there some religious institutions who said, not publicly anyway, that they don't want to participate in this endeavor? But other private nonprofits that will participate and work with us on this. I think that the broader issues have been really outlined, and we're not handling them very well. The sanitation issues that Alan alluded to, and we talked about with the staff presentation, the condition environmentally of our parks because of this, also the impact on the people who are camping there. And, you know, this isn't so much for me about, you know, the condition of the land versus the condition of the people, but we need to keep both in mind. So I also, and I probably need another round, Mayor, you know, want us to look at getting, developing some secure locking, locker-type facility so people can store their private possessions while they're out looking for jobs or other things during the day, and some more coordination between our public and private partners around building some infrastructure on these issues. So I'll wait till my second round.
Claire?
Thank you. I will probably need two rounds. Also, at least, I appreciate the, where this conversation has started, but I wanted to make some comments and address some of the things we've heard from the public on this issue recently. So, you know, I, too, have given this a lot of thought. I've met with sleeps advocates, homeless residents, I toured the BLM land, and appreciate the tour that the city park staff organized for us. I've heard from park users, other park users besides homeless residents, who shared their concerns about the various ways the parks are being used, and these are people who've not felt safe coming down to our public meetings to talk about this because of all the emotion that has been obvious at some of our public meetings. And there aren't obviously any easy answers, or we would be doing those. We have people living in our parks and open spaces because they lack other alternatives. And I have great compassion for folks who are in that situation and don't have safe shelter, and I really see the need for the city and other agencies to do something to assist them and provide for their needs. But also, when sitting at this table and in this chair, I need to be accountable to the wider community as well, and other folks who want to use the Parks and Open Space in other ways. So we really need to balance the reality of people needing to sleep with the needs of our other residents, to be able to use our parks as intended, and frankly, they weren't created to be temporary shelters or places for people to find sleep at night. Many of the sleeps advocates have asserted that our policies on locking park bathrooms are meant to punish people for being homeless, and this is simply not true. And it really does a disservice to our city staff, who are trying to do their best in difficult circumstances. Our Parks Department has an obligation to try and keep the bathrooms usable for everyone, and have limited ways to address the difficult problem. If homeless residents were simply using the bathroom to relieve themselves, that wouldn't lead to them being locked, they wouldn't need to be locked, but that's not what's happening. Folks are taking up residence in the bathrooms, and then often they're leaving them so filthy that they can't be used by anyone else, including other homeless residents. So again, it's not an easy solution, but we have people out there who are trying to do the best they can. I understand and agree and recognize that many unhoused peoples are economic refugees. They've lost their homes due to medical bankruptcy, loss of a job, loss of income. Even working people are struggling to find affordable Even working people are struggling to find affordable housing, and many of our homeless are actually employed. So this is not a situation that I think is going to change in the near future. We do have limited resources to provide emergency shelter on an ongoing basis. We can do it for a short amount of time, but ongoing funding's really challenging. The federal funding has been directed to permanent housing, and so we really have to look for other sources if we're going to fund emergency shelter. It's long been an issue in this community, that the only large emergency shelter here in town is provided by a private religious nonprofit, and not by the city. Yep, thanks.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I understand the challenges faced in our economy today by folks who find themselves homeless. I think, and I may be mistaken about this, but I think I'm the only guy at the table that lives in multifamily housing. I think I'm the only guy at the table who rents a space, and could end up out of it But I sense that we don't have a collective will to declare an emergency. I sense that we don't have the collective will to create, other than what we have done so far, a large-scale opportunity on city space, for a camp, for a single camp, other than what we've discussed already. And this is a problem that's everywhere in our country, there are jurisdictions that are facing it. This is a problem that's not new, and we are addressing something that's complicated, and there aren't easy answers for. So for me, this doesn't seem like, take the easy solution, try and put ban, problem. It seems like something we have to get really creative about, how we think about the solution. So I'm just going to kind of brainstorm a little bit with some of the stuff that I've thought about, and maybe it sparks something, and maybe it won't. But I don't have an easy answer for this, that doesn't make somebody angry. First thing, talk with me, Glenn, please, if you can, about the issues that surround the governance of camping on private property, because there's a great deal more of that than there is on public property. We, within the city limits, people can camp in someone's front yard, pretty much as they see fit. What are the, talk with me about city governance around that issue, what do we deal with?
There are at least two types of provisions that can come into play. One is zoning restrictions. So the zoning codes don't necessarily allow anybody, well, they don't allow people to create campgrounds in their front yards.
Is that distinctive from someone to camp?
Yes, depending on exactly how the code is written. Now, there is a part of the code, it's, you know, Mark was talking about, there's the prohibited camping section, and then following that, there's permitted camping. In the permitted camping section, the council placed, I can't remember, five, ten years ago, a provision that says somebody can allow one tent, one camp, you know, it's more than one camper, but basically, something in their backyard. So you could allow, you know, a tent, maybe that would include a Conestoga hut, to put in your backyard, and that would be authorized by the code. But otherwise, the part of the code that says, people can't camp, the council has the authority to regulate how private property is used. That's what the zoning code does.
But, excuse me, but for all intents and purposes, anybody that's got a house and a decent-sized backyard can let somebody camp in their backyard if they want to, right?
Correct. The code specifically authorizes that.
Okay. So let me just kind of jump off of that for a second. Do we have, I know that, you know, there are a lot of folks who work very hard, especially with a lot of our local community faith organizations, to organize opportunities for camping. Do we have any manner of, and I guess I'm asking the manager really, more than anything else, any large-scale, or have we discussed with staff, a large-scale opportunity to organize those people willing to allow camping on their private land? Talk with me around the efforts that have been made to try and solicit that opportunity.
This may be one for Michael West to come up and be able to respond more specifically. Okay. Mike, I want you to stay on this chair, if you would.
I mean, I know that there are some efforts going on, but I'm looking at much larger scale. Have we talked about it, what have we done that hasn't worked, that sort of?
Well, as far as recruitment efforts for sites on nonprofit, are we talking specific to faith communities?
And I'm not talking about just recruitment of a big private site, where a bunch of people are talking about putting out information to the community, largely saying, "If you'd like to let somebody camp on your property, let us know, because we're creating a registry." Have we ever done anything like that?
We don't monitor private, you know, single-family home use for camping. We work with St. Vincent de Paul to manage the faith-based access centers, so that serves up to twelve families, I believe, right now, in different church lots.
So it's fair to say, we haven't ever appealed to the wider public, for people that camp in small numbers?
Another round, Mike.
On smaller pieces of property. Yes, Mayor? Is that correct?
Not to my knowledge. I can also add a little bit, if, in option two, that we sent to you yesterday, and have here, one of the things we would suggest is exploring some sort of a network, that allows individuals to easily identify places. I don't know exactly what that looks like. It could be through a two-on-one system, or somewhere where there's essentially an inventory, and ideally, it's a real-time basis on whether a particular spot is available for that night, whether it's in a private home, in a nonprofit religious institution. So that's something we would suggest, if you move down this road, that we'd want to at least explore that.
That's really what I was suggesting. Yes, I would like another round.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, you know, the four options or ideas that were presented to us, you know, I think that they're fine, but they don't go anywhere near to addressing the magnitude of the problem. I mean, I'll support all four of those, and we could do that like that. But I was looking at the one-night homeless count that Pearl Wolf made available to us yesterday, and I figure, totally unsheltered, there's at least seven hundred and forty-six people. Now, that's for all of Lane County, but most of them, we know, are in Eugene. This includes a hundred and forty-nine unsheltered people with mental health issues, a hundred and fifty-one unsheltered, totally unsheltered, never even make it to a temporary shelter, veterans, twenty-five households with children, chronically homeless, two hundred and seventy totally unsheltered, never, never go to an ignoring center. I mean, you know, the magnitude of the problem is really enormous, and so, you know, we're talking about the people in the camps, what are our choices, you know? Choice A, drive everybody out of the camps, go in and clean up the site, do it again when they move somewhere else. They'll just move somewhere else. They're not going to go away. They don't have any place to go. They'll find another place, set up another camp, the same problem won't arise. So we go in, drive them out, clean up the site, maybe arrest and find some of them, people with no money. Our other choice is figure out another solution. And, because this is just, that's a perpetual cycle that will never end, if we keep doing that, and it's not working, obviously. So we need to figure something else out, and I don't know exactly what that will be, but I kind of liked Counselors Zalink and Counselor Evans' suggestion, and in fact, I kind of wrote down a similar thing. I think that we need to just accept, while we're working on it, make the existing camp sanitary. Let's just accept the problem that let people stay where they are right now. I mean, maybe move some of them out of city parks, if they're in a really sensitive area, but establish trash pickup and porta-potties for the places that are existing. And then, that's for the short term. Counselor Zalink suggested ninety days, I think that's pretty good. In ninety days, maybe we could pick some other locations, because they're going to go somewhere. So why don't we pick someplace? Nobody wants them in their neighborhood, I understand that. Nobody wants a homeless camp in their neighborhood. So let's pick some places, like Counselors Zalink suggested, vacant city-owned lands. Some of them are on the periphery. I saw a map that was presented of vacant city-
Another round, George.
-surplus property. Yes, please.
Okay, Chris?
Thank you. Obviously, an interesting topic. Everybody's going over because of the interest, and that's fine, that does show the interest. And for me, one of the challenges in this conversation has been the magnitude, we've already mentioned that fact, and a parallel for me is, you know, this community's made up of many different neighborhoods, and those neighborhoods have, they have homes, they have streets, they have infrastructure, running water, sewage. This is the equivalent of an entire neighborhood suddenly appearing, the unhoused neighborhood. And it's suddenly appeared with a couple of thousand people, and there is no infrastructure in place to accommodate this neighborhood that's suddenly appeared. Normally neighborhoods grow gradually, and you put in the infrastructure as the neighborhood grows, but we don't have that opportunity now, because the neighborhood is here. And so we have to accept the reality, that when you have a neighborhood, the unhoused neighborhood suddenly appear with no infrastructure, we're confronted with the fact that it would be enormously expensive to create infrastructure for an entire neighborhood. So we have to figure out some sort of a in-between kind of idea. Some folks have mentioned declare emergencies. I work for an organization that dealt in emergencies, and you could easily declare an emergency, and you could accommodate a couple of thousand people relatively easily. It would be expensive, but you could do it, but emergency response is just that. It's emergency response. It's not what you do when you have an entire neighborhood that you have to accommodate. That requires a permanent solution. That becomes the difficulty for me, because like any other neighborhood in this community, it has good people, and it has bad people, and it requires infrastructure, and you have to have supervision, policing, everything any other neighborhood in the community requires. But this is a unique case, in that it's not in one single place. It's spread around, which makes it a unique neighborhood, and also a very difficult neighborhood to manage. Is there a way we can think of infrastructure solutions that are not going to create way more of financial burden than we can deal with? You know, Mike's idea of having us begin to pull together, to me seems like one of the only solutions we can deal with. The city of Eugene simply cannot solve this problem as a city government. It is way, way too overwhelming to accommodate an entire new neighborhood with zero infrastructure overnight. We simply don't have the resources. But, as with many other emergencies, if we think of some way where we can begin to work together, the human service community, the government community, the private sector, you know, whomever, we can come together and say, "Let's figure out a way to accommodate this new neighborhood that has come to us," without bankrupting ourselves, but at least figuring out how we can deal with some of this infrastructure issue.
Right on the mark, Chris. Betty?
Thank you. First, a question about the back, someone camping in your backyard. As I understand it, you'd have to have sanitary facilities for that to be allowed, isn't that correct?
That's true. Either you provide a porta potty, or you allow the individual to use the bathroom inside the house. You could not just tell somebody they're there, and not deal with either sanitary or trash.
That's what I thought. And I think the restrooms is a big, a big problem. I complained when I saw the Amazon restrooms were now being closed, but then I received some pictures of what was happening in them, which made it impossible for anyone to use them, so I don't know what, but it's a big health hazard if people are, don't have access, so I assume that porta-potties are the best solution. I think what we really need is a shelter, and I don't, do we know whether CDVG funds could be used to establish a shelter? Anybody know that?
Depending on the type of the program, there are ways to use CDVG for sheltering.
I think that would be a good use for those funds, that we, people need a place to be inside, and it's better, I think, if it's concentrated, because in Reno, I toured a home, a shelter, which was right next to a place where people could go for food, which made it very convenient. They did have to leave, they could only sleep there at night, they couldn't stay in the daytime, but nearby, there was a place where they could go to get food, coffee, and actually, like, almost in the yard, and then both things were downtown, near the railroad tracks. Brings me to another question, I've brought this up before, and some people think it's ridiculous, but we have a lot of empty jail space. Is there any way we could get the county to let us, let homeless people use that?
You know, we can sure ask. I think, just thinking about it for ten seconds, I think that could be, one, difficult from their perspective, two, you still have the, all the staffing involved, and three, I'm just curious on how that sends a message back out into the homeless community, and so I'm just thinking through that a little bit.
It's clean, I assume it's clean, it's dry. There must be sanitary facilities. I know, once I was in somewhere in England, and I couldn't find a place to stay, and I was going to ask if I could go to the jail, but I found, a police officer found me another place. But anyway, it's shelter, and I think, and how about school grounds, as well as church grounds?
You know, our proposal right here would be that religious institutions or other nonprofits-
Could include schools.
-nonprofit, could be a school in that case. And just as clarification, this actual, because this dusted on would not require sanitary and trash facilities be set up, it could be provided, but not a requirement for that to be provided.
Well, that's, that to me is the absolutely essential thing, for health reasons, for the unhoused people, as well as for everyone else who's using those areas. And another question, how much open space, how much free city-owned space that's not being used do we have? Does anybody know?
That's one of those things, that if the council chooses to move forward with the, I think what Alan talked about, which was vacant, non-parks and open space, we'd want to come back with what that map is. If you gave us direction to pursue that, then we would just pursue that, and I think Greg talked about maybe designating five or six places, and so we would come back with, where are those specifically?
Sounds like a good idea. Actually, I thought the Occupy site was a pretty good site, because it's not used that much for other things, but I have requested a work session on using CDVG funds for homeless shelter. I do think that it's more than a Eugene problem, though, it is a state problem, and there should be state-supported, which we would all be supporting, shelters scattered around the state. There used to be such things, just as there used to be mental institutions, and we need them both again. Thank you.
I suppose some people would argue that our prison system's used right now to house a lot of people who have mental health issues, so let's do the next round. Alan?
There's a little comment on the report that Pearl Wolf provided for us, in Lane County, on the homeless count, and it distinguishes homeless from unsheltered. We have seventeen hundred individuals that are homeless, eleven hundred of those are men, women, and children without shelter, two sixty-one are in transitional housing, three hundred and eighty-eight are in emergency shelter, and it's like a hundred and eight homeless households with children, and shamefully, two hundred and twenty-nine homeless veterans are, a hundred and fifty-one of those are unsheltered, and that's not the way that we should treat our veterans. And about four hundred and fifteen are chronically homeless people, about two hundred and seventy-five are unsheltered. So the, it's not, you know, that is a big number, but it's not within, it is within the grasp of being able to deal with it, I think. Comment on, if you could, Mr. City Manager Mark, about, you mentioned that maybe we wouldn't have to provide garbage or toilet facilities if it were just dusted on, say, ten to seven. How would we do that if we did, and what would it cost? If we had a limited number, say, like Greg was saying, five spots?
Just to provide a little bit more context for the item number two here, the idea on that really is, is to distribute the infrastructure requirements and needs broader into the community, more of a community-based, and so recognizing that really, the entire community really is, needs to participate and be a part of this, commitment and accountability to the unhoused and the community. What this would do is, ideally, maybe there's dozens or scores, or a hundred properties that would say, "You know what, I'm willing to have one, two, three, four, maybe it's a max of five." I'm willing to have one, two, three, four, maybe it's a max of five people from Dust Till Dawn to actually stay on their particular property." And so, you actually are trying to increase capacity in a way that, recognizing also from a resource point of view, we, all of you know, we don't have lots and lots of resources. So, this is intended to be a community-based, distribute that back out into the community to help with that. If we were to try to provide sanitary facilities and trash for all of those sites, I don't know if we know what the cost of a sanitary system is. I don't know if you happen to know that, Michael?
But a porta potty costs?
Yeah.
The rule of thumb for the Saint Lucie Paul car camping program is about 1,000 a year per site. That's, would be one restroom and one trash receptacle. The size of the site would vary the cost.
Another piece of that that we just briefly talked about is it, maybe it also provides opportunities to explore new kinds of partnerships. So, for example, if, if in fact, we want to try to establish this network where it's kind of a real-time, maybe that's an, or the ongoing maintenance or the management of these sites, not in a formal way, but in a, sort of managing this type of program, maybe sleeps as part of the community partnership to help do those kinds of things. And so, that could be something we'd want to explore as well.
Yeah, that's, that's a fine idea, just that it goes far enough. If we gave you direction on the type of places, so we said, city-owned land, vacant, non-improved parks, non-sensitive, open spaces, could you go and look at that and bring us back a list of, I don't know how many, Greg suggested five spaces that would be acceptable? Could you bring us back that list?
We could. One of the criteria we'd be interested in is how many campsites are you interested that they can actually accommodate? So, if it's three versus 110, that's different. And then the management issues are a little bit different with that, too. My assumption is, and we would want to get clarification, is that on those city-owned sites, we would include some sort of porta potty trash as well. I'm assuming that that's part of that piece. But the answer to your question is yes, we'd want a little bit more criteria around size of accommodation.
Well, I think that kind of depends on the particular site. So, it might be, you could bring us back, this site would be limited to 10 people, 15 people or whatever. That could be part of this, too. Just to get clear on the process for moving forward, whatever we do today, we give direction to staff. They would have to develop a draft ordinance, bring that back to council for review at another meeting. We would have to vote on it to move it to a public hearing. We'd have to go to a public hearing. And then, we would have another meeting where we'd vote on it. And then, if we voted yes, it wouldn't go into effect for another 30 days unless we declared an emergency.
Correct. And Glenn can chime in on all of this. It's possible that the ordinance could take effect, plus or minus July 1st, depending, again, how fast the council chooses to move or implement. If in fact, you get to July 1st and you talk about 90 days, I'd recommend 120 days. And the only reason why I would say that is, there could be a multiple reason, but one reason is 90 days gets you to the end of September. You might remember, you'll be coming back probably around the 10th of September, and I'm not sure there's enough time to deal with it within those couple of weeks. And so, if you move in this direction, I would suggest it goes till, it's gonna be September 30th, October 1st, just to give you enough time on the backside to evaluate it.
That's thinking that the public hearing would be the June public hearing date.
Yeah.
So, no.
No, sooner than that, because it'd be 30 days after that.
Right. So, if you wanted to take action in May and have it become effective by July 1, then the direction needs to happen today. We would not bring back a proposed ordinance for a work session. We would take it straight to a public hearing, just because of the charter notice requirements. The public hearing would be mid-May. We have to have that ordinance drafted and posted by the end of this month and you don't have another meeting between now and then. But we could draft the ordinance, we could post it, you could have the public hearing on it, and then you certainly could change it after the public hearing. But if you, in order to act on the ordinance in the month of May, we'd need that direction today.
For the May. I thought we had to approve an ordinance to go to a public hearing.
No, you can give us direction to craft the ordinance for a public hearing.
Okay. And what would it, and how would an emergency work? How does that get declared? We don't do that very often at all.
For the ordinance you're talking about?
For it to go into effect sooner than 30 days.
Six members of the council have to approve it. There is also a part of the charter that allows a unanimous council to reduce the timing in terms of notice, public hearing requirements. And that's what you did for the Conestoga Hut ordinance in December, that you gave direction one day, and I think it was actually a couple of days later, or maybe it was the next week that we brought the ordinance back and you acted on it. That part requires unanimous consent of the council. To have an ordinance go into effect in less than 30 days requires six counselors to vote yes.
So, given the timing that we need to move, I'll put a motion on the floor. Direct the city manager to bring back an ordinance that would allow people to sleep undisturbed and camp overnight from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM on vacant city Eugene-owned lands, but not including improved parkland or sensitive environmental, open space. With staff to bring back a specific list of allowable sites. And on religious institution or nonprofit organization properties if they allow it. And this would be a program for 120 days, at which time this council shall review the pilot program and assess whether or not to continue the ordinance.
Second. Moved and seconded. We have 10 minutes left and I have in the queue Greg, Claire, Mike, George, and Chris.
Since there's a motion on the floor, I'll speak to the motion. I would like to see us add one caveat to that, and that is that since people are already in a, in parks existing right now and other places around our community, that part of that transition should be that we have a moratorium on the Dust, the Dust Till Dawn sleeping portion of the ordinance. I think that that is, that's, that is a humane way to approach this, a way to go as people are transitioning into non-developed, either parklands or undeveloped city property, per the motion that Alan has made. So, I'd like to make that friendly amendment.
I'm not exactly sure what, what you're suggesting.
What I'm suggesting, what I'm suggesting is this, Alan. Is, no, not, not, not a blanket, not a blanket deal. Only in specific designated areas that we look at, you know, it'd be, it'd be a half a dozen areas, you know, that would be legal for people to sleep until we can get these other areas established and have people move into these other areas. Because it's gonna take time to transition this. And maybe I'm not doing it right, but...
So, we can't lift that ban without changing the ordinance? So, we have to go through that, all that process? So, there is no interim?
All right. I got you.
So, they, it would go into effect, say, July 1st and it would, on those designated places that they would transition to. And some of them will probably, most likely be places where people are, have existing camping.
And, you know, and also to the motion, to a certain degree, as a point of personal privilege, my family several years ago took in family friends that found themselves homeless due to no fault of their own. When you lose a job, you have a health crisis, you lose your insurance, your unemployment runs out, and you have children, it was either for this individual to live in her car with her child, or in a park, or on the street someplace if they did not have our home to land in. And so, I'm highly sensitive of that because I know that we have children in the Bethel School District, Eugene, Springfield, all of these districts who are going to school from cars and from parks in our community. And I think that, you know, I like the direction that we're moving and I'm gonna support the motion.
So, I like the direction we're going to, but I, my concern, and I'm not trying to slow things down, I'm just saying, add another meeting if you need to, but we can't even get through two rounds of conversation here before we're ready to put something out that will move to a public hearing. I'd like to have everybody have a little bit more time to have people digest it, think about it, hear responses. I know we do that in a hearing, but this is different. This is when you're composing what it is you're putting out there. I think we'd benefit from one more conversation, and I don't want the people in the room to think we're trying to slow things down or change things. So, I don't know if we need to put another meeting so we can work with the time issue or not, Glenn. And I don't know if people here are interested in that, but I just think this is really, I think it could, could have used a little more chewing on as a, as a, as a group and thinking about what Alan said and hearing from, from, from staff and others and just kind of give, give ourselves a chance to really be as smart about this as we can be.
Just to clarify, Mayor, I purposely didn't say for the May public hearing, because I agree with you.
Okay. So, so if this passed, Alan, I, it would be good if we had, what you're proposing would move forward and come back in a, in an ordinance form, right? And I, I'm suggesting that maybe one more round of conversation before we get to that point. And if we need to put an extra meeting in to do it, so we move along rapidly, let's, let's do that. So, I, of course, that's up to you guys. I'm just suggesting that.
Who's that next in the queue?
Whatever it takes.
That would be clear. All right. Thank you. Well, I appreciate your comments, Mayor. I agree. I think we do have a lot to consider. I think we just are feeling the urgency of needing to act and provide relief sooner rather than later. And I think that we need to be looking at these types of kind of creative solutions, I guess you could call them, that are temporary while we also look and explore Counselor Taylor's suggestion of the use of other funding to find some more permanent emergency shelter that the city could establish and provide. I noted that there's $15 million left still from PROS bonds that could be potentially used, I'm not sure, maybe repurposed to. So, no, I'm getting a lot of head shakings. I'm just saying, we need to think about how we're using our resources to address this emergency need. And also, we are hearing potentially $300,000 a year of Parks and Open Space budget being used. We know that police spend a lot of their budget, so we could think about repurposing some of those funds to support emergency shelters that are not necessarily little pockets here and there. I'd be all right with tabling our, our motion. I would like to add to it to include commercial industrial sites as well. So, that was, is a proposal to amend. Alan?
You, Alan. Friendly amendment is what she was referring to.
Correct. Yep.
Think about that. So, what do you mean by that?
So, not just nonprofit, private property, religious institutions, but commercial industrial sites that might be, you know, warehouse land that's not currently being used, that's someone would be willing to let some people live on for a while.
Sure. I'd accept that with the caveat that what I was trying to do was put a straw proposal on the table, so we have something to work off of, so we have something concrete, not to move this fast in expedition. I think we do need to be thoughtful and careful about this. So, with that caveat, I'll accept the friendly amendment and then we can have that conversation about the implications of all that with some more thought.
Good.
And who was your second?
I was the second.
Okay.
Do you accept it?
I accept.
All right. I've got Mike, George, Chris, and Betty in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna say something, I guess, that's more for the audience, because I see a lot of the same people that often come to us Monday and speak, to say that it's, it's my opinion that a lot of times, the input we get from, from people at public forums is, "Golly, guys, why don't you just get how simple this is? Just do X." And I guess I would respond and say, "Because it isn't that simple and otherwise, we'd already done it." Reason we can't is because there are other considerations that, and that may be different for many of us at the table. Other considerations of other constituents, other parts of the community that feel differently about it. And we're trying to balance all that stuff. So, the simple answers aren't there. I'm, I'm gonna vote against this particular motion, and the reason is because I'm interested in solving the problem. I'm not certain that this does. Now, I appreciate it's an effort towards doing so. But we've been having this discussion now for how long? A couple of years, at least, in earnest? So, let's have a real discussion about this. I mean one, and I know we had a fantastic group of folks get together and work on it that came out with some good solutions, and that's fantastic. That's great. But they weren't able to be easily absorbed by the council into policy and enact it. They weren't. So, we didn't solve it. So, I would suggest that there are three underlying issues that we could think about as ways to get our hands around a better solution. One is, this is a problem where many people in the community talk about it, many people feel strongly about it, many people feel something should be done. I think all of those people should be enlisted in the solution. That's why I suggest the idea of a broader network of those who would be willing to offer some space of theirs to be a part of the solution. We can, as a government, create the organization around organizing information about where those places are. And I'd like to see us prepare that as a potential solution. Two other issues. This is a county-wide problem. Anytime we talk about doing anything around economic development, one of the quickest answers is, "We can't as a city just act," because obviously, this is a county-wide issue, and we have to act in concert with our, with our other partners. This issue fits that profile as well. If we're not having a larger-scale conversation with the cities of Springfield and Lane County, we're cutting ourselves short of what could be a larger-scale solution. Number two, number three, we have a resource in the University of Oregon over here that is not being utilized. And by that, I mean not their land or their, their money. There are places like Indiana that, at South Bend, where they, they partner with the university and with the, their alumni and with the community and with the church to address this issue well.
Move to extend 10 minutes past the time.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor and none in opposition. Okay, 10 more minutes. Here we go. All right.
I guess I need another round if it's possible.
We'll see.
One short other bit, just that much.
We'll see. That's, that hearkens to my earlier comment, I think. George?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think we're headed in the right direction. I think I will support the motion because we're not, we don't have the actual wording nailed down for the public hearing. I think that's okay. I've noticed that we don't have any meetings scheduled for next Monday or next Wednesday.
We meet on?
And I think we ought to pick one of those days. Maybe Wednesday, because by that time, that would give staff time to prepare the map of vacant, non-park, city-owned spaces with some idea of the capacity of how many people could be on that space for sleeping purposes. I think we need to talk about providing lockers and trash pickup and porta potties with the, with the cost of what that might be. There's so many people in the community that are willing and ready to jump in and volunteer to build their little structure to, to shelter the lockers. I mean, I would do that. Councilor Clark knows how to use a hammer and a saw. And I know lots of people who would just jump, jump all over that and donate materials and, because that's part of the problem. You have to have a place to leave your stuff while you're out feeding yourself and looking for a job and going to the social service agency to get your benefits. You need a place to store your stuff and you know it'll be there when you come back to it. A lot of people don't have that. So, I would suggest that we meet again next Wednesday. And I don't know if I need to...
City Manager?
We can do head nods or...
I'll be out of town.
And that's the, I give them time.
Glenn, do you need more? You need...
Not very much time.
Is not much time?
No. Couple of days.
We'll be out of town both these days. Okay.
What I would recommend on timing, if the, if what council would like to do is come back as soon as possible and you're willing to add a meeting, then maybe what we can do is figure out who's available when and actually do that, rather than just sort of on the fly.
Can I, anybody object to that?
That sounds reasonable. That sounds reasonable. I, you know, because, you're right. I mean, we've been talking about it for quite a while, and it hasn't gone away. It won't go away anytime soon. You're right, we do need to coordinate with Springfield and Lane County, but I feel like we have to take the lead on this. Someone's got to take the lead. And I think the Eugene City Council, I think it's us. We need to take the lead, because this is where the most publicized problems are happening, are in Eugene, not Springfield, not out in the county. You don't see news of unauthorized camping. I mean, I know it's happening, but we don't, you don't see it. I mean, it's mostly happening here in Eugene, so it's up to us to step up, take the lead, involve, yes, involve Springfield and the county. But if we start that discussion right now, wow, you want to get bogged down and then see nothing happen? That's exactly what would happen, I believe, if we did, went to that stage now. I think we need to take the lead on it. And, and I really like the direction. I appreciate Counselor Zelenka's, uh, motion, and I do support it. And, um, I think we are, I think we are in an emergency situation. It's not going away.
Okay, so, I, you can see that we have, I don't know, seven minutes left, and I've got five people in the queue. I'm not putting another person in the queue. We're done after this. Okay. Chris, be as short as you can be.
I will. And just quickly, I can support Alan's proposal, because I don't see it as the final solution. And I do think it gets some language in front of us that we can work on, because I know we'll be, we'll need, continue to work this over. Question I did have is there are still four items that we were originally intending to vote on. I could see two of them, one and two, are kind of being replaced by what Alan's proposing, but would you still like action on item three and item four? Those look like you would still like to get some specific action. So, after this vote, I would make a motion, I will go ahead and make motions on items number three and four.
And item one also, it is a little bit different than item two. We assumed one and three, which probably, no brainer, we'd bring those back unless there's a...
Right.
Item four, though, we really would like to have, whether or not you want to spend those dollars out of your contingency. So that would be good to know today.
But that might, I just want to say that might take some, some discussion time.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't think, are you on a deadline that you have to, can we bring this up in the next conversation?
We can just know that, I don't know specifically where we are in that process, so that process may just stop for a moment until we come back for that conversation.
Okay. I needed clarity on whether to bring them up. It sounds like I can, I should wait. Okay.
Betty?
I will support the motion, I think, eventually, but I move the table till our next meeting, May eighth.
Second.
Oh, no discussion. All those in favor, please indicate. Two in opposition. One, two, three, four, five, it goes down. All right.
I stole my turn, right?
Yep.
I think it's, if we schedule a special meeting, it's important that it be a time when everyone can be here. And I know I will be out of town all of next week. And I think we, sometimes you plan your life ahead of time, and it is important that we not have a meeting without everyone being able to be here. I'm not, I'm willing to do a special, an extra meeting if we need it, but I thought May eighth would be soon enough, and that's why I made the motion to table. Thanks.
I've got Alan and Mike and Claire, and then we're done. Alan?
Uh, just real quickly, I'm not under any illusion that this solves the problem. I've been working on this for over twenty years, and the problem's only got worse. Not that I haven't been doing some good thing, or that I'm responsible for that, but there's just no easy answer to this. It's a world-class, hard problem. And I put this out full willing, knowing this is a temporary Band-Aid. And I agree, it's a community problem, and all the jurisdictions need to work on this together. But the pump needs some priming, and we need to lead here. And so, then all of you can go to the Lane County and the Springfield meetings and do what you do there.
Mike?
There is no easy answer, and as Chris is fond of saying, you can have it, right? Fast or cheap. And thus, there's really, it's a bad idea for us to be moving this quickly, because there isn't an easy answer. That's right. We should be taking our time and at least trying to do this more thoroughly. I won't vote in favor of it, because I don't want to give us the opportunity to say, ah, look what we've done. We've done a great thing, and then ignore the issue. I'd really like to see us get creative, think outside the box, and try and make a significant dent in it. And it's going to take more time to do that, and it's going to take a larger effort to do that. I'd like to see, with this particular opportunity, two issues of much better information, city liability and the issues of cost that we're going to deal with and where they would come from in the budget. But I'm talking about outside city liability issues of what kind of unintended consequence liability are we creating when we congregate on city-owned property? There are opportunities and other models in the country to, to do a much better job with this issue than we've been doing. And I, I really hate to see us short-circuit. I prefer to see us look at this as a region-wide issue, where we have an opportunity to come up with an innovative solution.
Claire?
Thank you. I, I appreciate Counselor Brown and Zelenka saying we need to take leadership on this. I think I agree, even though it's frustrating that other jurisdictions aren't at the table, thinking about how to help us solve this. I wasn't sure if this comes back to us, if we can take the city manager's recommendation to extend it to a hundred and twenty days. I think that's a good recommendation. And to keep in mind that this is a temporary lifting, so that we can see what are the ramifications of allowing this kind of activity, and how can we mitigate, you know, the, the problems that are probably going to arise from that new thing. And I appreciate Chris bringing up those two items. I would like to act on those. If we add a meeting, particularly, I would support waiving the fee for Opportunity Village. But apparently, that will cause some conversation that we don't have time for today. So, I appreciate the start we've gotten on this. I think we're moving in the right direction, and I do feel some sense of urgency, so I hope we have our next meeting soon.
We're ready to vote. Alan?
Before you vote, I want to make sure I understand the motion. My understanding, based on the conversation, is the motion is to direct us to put together some information and options, you know, consistent with the specifics that Alan had in his motion, but that we are not scheduling a public hearing on an ordinance. Instead, we're putting that together, and we're bringing it back to you at the next work set.
As soon as we can.
As soon as you can, right. But that means we will not, I will not be posting any ordinance on the web, and we will not have this on the council public hearing for May...
Until we have a chance to look at it again.
Right.
All right. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you for your first steps on this.